It's Tuesday, January 7th. We're going to go ahead and start our Board of Supervisors meeting. Can I ask for a roll call to establish quorum, please?
Supervisor Allen.
Here.
Supervisor Christie.
Caught me by surprise there. Here.
Supervisor Heinz.
Supervisor Scott.
Here.
Chagrihalva.
Here.
Let the record show Supervisor Heinz is not present. All other board members are present.
Thank you. And for the Pledge of Allegiance, Joey Schwan's Public Property Manager with Attractions and Tourism is going to lead us in the pledge. Thank you for being here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Joey, do you want to tell us what's going on in your life right now at work? Give us an update on all the fun things.
Well, I work with Attractions and Tourism, and I oversee the leased property attractions here in the county, including the Fairgrounds, Colossal Cave, Desert Museum, Old Tucson, Pima Air and Space Museum, Titan Museum. So it keeps me busy just managing leases, working with our lease property operators and their contracts, and making sure they're turning in their reports to the board and all that. So it keeps me busy every day.
It sounds like it.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. I don't think, we don't always know what everyone does in the county, so when I can get a moment, I like to ask.
You bet.
Thank you for all you do.
You bet.
And then for the land acknowledgement statement will be offered by Dora Maldonado. She's a council aide for City of Tucson's Ward 6 Council Office, and it's a video.
Hello, my name is Dora Maldonado, and I'm a council aide for the Ward 6 Council Office of Karyan Ullik. I have been in the office for...
No. You think we want to...
Dora Maldonado, and I'm a council aide for the Ward 6 Council Office of Karyan Ullik. I have been in the office for three years, and I appreciate all the knowledge that I've gained in working with our constituency. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors for this opportunity.
In the meantime, Mr. Brown, could you read the land acknowledgement, please?
On behalf of Pima County residents, we honor the tribal nations who have served as caretakers of this land from time immemorial, and respectfully acknowledge the ancestral homelands of the Tahona Odom Nation and the multi-millennial presence of the Pascoa Yaki Tribe within Pima County. Consistent with Pima County's commitment to diversity and inclusion, we strive toward building equal partner relationships with Arizona's tribal nations.
Thank you. And then we have pause for pause? Maybe not today, or today. Oh, no. Here she comes. For those of you who've not been here before, this baby's available for adoption. Cutie patootie. I know. Try to look away, you can't.
Good morning, men of chairs. We've had a very, I feel a bit boring this morning. Catch my breath. This is Glenda. She's 13 weeks old. She's available for adoption. Sorry, we had to kind of run up here with the traffic.
I'm sorry.
Getting her this morning. Whew. We have our at-capacity at pack, as you know, over capacity, so we have over 500 dogs. Glenda and her siblings are available for adoption at 4,000 North Subaba Road. And this weekend, excuse me, I'm so sorry, I'm out of breath. This weekend, we're having the barks at Bario. So we're having an adoption event with some partnered rescues. So I'd like to invite everybody down there to Armory Park to come and take a look at the dogs. We might have a few cats, too. And also to come to our facility for your next forever pet, and come meet Glenda and her siblings, and all the other beautiful dogs and cats and pets at pack. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Agenda adjustments.
On the regular agenda, page 7, item 31, this is a grant with the State of Arizona Department of Housing. It's GCWD 81408. And also on page 7, item 32, it is also a grant with the State of Arizona Department of Housing, GCWD 81168. These items are the same agreement with two separate federal funds. On page 8, item 33, it is a grant with the State of Arizona Department of Housing, amendment number 1, GCWD 81168. Agenda item number 32 must be approved prior to consideration of this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have the oath of office. I think a lot of us are here for that. And so because we have so many, I want to thank Judge Louski for being here. Thank you so much. If we can take the red partitions down, please. So what we're thinking of doing is kind of chunking them up, so our judge won't have to read the oath, I don't know, 35 times. Well, we'll do it together, but I did want to give an opportunity, because many of us, including myself, didn't ever have a chance to get sworn in in public. We all did it virtually four years ago, so I wanted to have an opportunity for us to, you know, be able to say aye and our names, where the way we've done it in the past is everyone just comes up here and we all sort of mumble through it. And so what I was thinking is that we would chunk up the Board of Supervisors, and then the assessor, county attorney, county recorder, school superintendent, sheriff and treasurer, because it's about the same number, and then the justice of the peace, and then constables. And then we'll just sort of take turns, and then all of us will have an opportunity to grab the mic and say our name in our office. Does that sound okay? I know, it's a little bit confusing, but we'll get it done. All right. So if I can ask Judge Louski to administer the oath, and then what's going to happen is going to say aye, and then give us an opportunity to say our name and office, and then we kind of read in unison together. I know. It's a little bit like, you know, it'll be fine.
It'll be good.
It'll be good. It'll be good. So do you want to go down here? Yes. Okay. Let's... And then my thought would be, for my colleagues, if we could stay off the dais, so when people take pictures, it's not of our faces, it will be with the seal in the background. You're welcome.
Scooching out of the picture zone. Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Oh, this is an honor. All right. I think we'll start with you all. Okay. Could you, aye, and then state your name and position, please?
Aye.
On? Yes. Aye, Adalita Grijalva, Pima County Supervisor, District 5.
Aye, Rex Scott, Pima County Supervisor, District 1.
Aye, Jennifer Allen, Pima County Supervisor, District 3.
Aye, Stephen W. Christie, Supervisor, District 4.
Thank you all. Now, if you could repeat after me, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
Support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona...
And the Constitution and laws.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
...and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
...and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of Board of Supervisor...
Discharge the duties of the Office of Supervisor.
...of Pima County, Arizona...
Of Pima County.
...according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I can hand it back to you.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Now, we've got the assessor, county attorney, county recorder, school superintendent, sheriff and treasurer. A whole crew. We've got everybody. Do we have school superintendent?
Maybe we're missing one. Okay. All right. Well, we'll start. If you could say, oops. Aye, and then state your name, please.
Aye, Brian Johnson, Pima County Treasurer.
Aye, Gabriela Casadas Kelly, Pima County Recorder.
Aye, Laura Conover for the Pima County Attorney's Office.
Aye, Suzanne Druby, Pima County Assessor.
Aye, Chris Nanos, Sheriff.
And then if you could all repeat, do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona...
The Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
...that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
Allegiance to the same.
...and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
...that I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
...discharge the duties of my office...
Discharge the duties of my office.
...of Pima County, Arizona...
Pima County.
...according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Help me God.
Congratulations to you all. Do we have some of our new Justice of the Peace? I know they did some things in their court, so I don't know if anybody came over. And then any Constables?
If we can all wait, I want to take a big group picture. All right, can we all come back and take a big group picture, please? Yes, thank you so much.
They want all the U-Elects, come on up.
All right. Thank you all for coming. This was really special. If those of you that were here just for the swearing-in wanted to get up and leave, do you want to take a quick five-minute little break? Three minutes? Okay. Thank you. Nick List. Thank you so much for your patience. Next, Board of Supervisors, the Board of Supervisors procedural organization, selection of the Chair and the Vice Chair. Historically, we take these separate. Do we still want to do that? Okay. So for selection of Chair, I'd like to move Rex Scott. That's a motion. Can I get a second?
I don't know if I can second myself.
You can second. Thank you. Supervisor Allen seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Item passes unanimously. The item with the Vice Chair?
Chair Gerhalde.
Supervisor Scott.
I'd like to nominate you for the position of Vice Chair.
Thank you. I'll second myself. I'm okay with it. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Item passes unanimously. Thank you.
Chair Gerhalde.
Yes, Supervisor Scott.
If it's okay with you and my colleagues, I would like to just go ahead and assume the Chair position at our next meeting on the 21st.
Okay. If that's all right, I'm happy to hand it over. We'll switch seats right now. Okay, thank you. And then we have the appointment of the Clerk of the Board. I'd like to move Melissa Monriquez.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Item passes unanimously. And the appointment of the Sergeant-at-Arms, I'd like to move John Stuckey III.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion? Oh, are you okay with that? I should ask you. I didn't ask you. Thank you. Have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Item passes unanimously. And now we have the recognition and retirement of Olga Valenzuela, an Administrative Assistant II with Transportation Department. And come on over. And Supervisor Heinz has just joined us. We want to, we're going to go ahead and bring some people up here, but we are here to recognize and acknowledge your service of 42 years. Thank you. Do you want this one coming?
Good morning. Hi, I'm Carmine DeBonis. I'm a Deputy County Administrator. Hi, Olga, how are you today? Congratulations. Pleasure, pleasure to meet you. It is the first time. So we have a little bit of overlap. You have 42 years, I have 34 coming up on January 12th. So congratulations to you. So I just wanted to make a couple of comments. So I understand, Olga, you started in January 11, 1983, in the SPOT program. So the SPOT program was for seasonal, part-time, and temporary employees. And I actually started in that program myself in 1991. So we have another thing in common right there. Olga worked at Keno Community Hospital in medical records, and then she transitioned to other departments. So she was with documents at Mission Road for a stint of time, and then was with Department of Transportation. So pedestrian and bike program, and then also, you know, worked on training for classes and bicycling. So 42 years of service to the constituents of Pima County, that's quite a career, absolutely. So congratulations to you. Thank you so much for your service, absolutely.
Well, I'll just say, Olga is not a stranger to me. She sits right outside my office, and she was the first face I saw 18 years ago when I started work at the county. So I'm really excited for Olga to get to retire. She has helped, I hear her talking to constituents all day. She is patient, she is thorough, she probably knows more about the county than most any of us, because you learn that much talking to constituents all day. So big congratulations and thank you, Olga.
Thank you. Olga, did you want to say anything? Okay. Is that mic on?
Hello?
There we go.
I want to thank Pima County for giving me the chance to work here. Thank you, guys. I want to thank the wonderful crew that I work with, Community Relations, they're a wonderful bunch, all the crew at Mission Road, everybody in the department, they're all good. Wonderful, you all guys need to meet them all, because they do excellent work. And I want to, most of all, thank my mentor, Rodney Palermo. He's the one that started me in this program, the SPOT program, and I never left, I loved it so much. I love working. But thank you so much for giving me this opportunity, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And for any of us who are here, for you, can we all come down and take a big picture? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's give Ms. Valenzuela another big round of applause. If you want to stay retired, don't answer the phone, because they'll be calling you, everybody. Next, we have call to the public. And so citizens attending the meeting shall observe rules of propriety, decorum, and good conduct. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who becomes boisterous while addressing the board may be removed by the Sergeant-at-Arms directed by the Chair. Such person may be barred from further audience before the board. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stomping of feet, whistles, yells, or similar demonstrations shall not be permitted by the Chair, who may direct offenders from the hearing room. Today, I have one card, Robert Royce. And if anyone else would like to speak, please go ahead and put in a card. Happy New Year.
Well, Happy New Year. That's exactly what I was going to say next. And welcome Supervisor Allen. I'm approaching 200 Board of Supervisors meetings since I returned to Tucson in 2001. And I know I must seem very annoying. I'm literally the only one sitting in this room, watching the meetings very often. The Republicans came in two years ago, in force, occupied the room, basically, and they came back last January, and now they're gone. I have seen dozens of special interests come through this room and the City Council Chamber. They all say their piece, and then they're gone. And this habit of attending meetings started in Fayetteville for me. I decided that our manager-director government was failing badly, good old boy system, handful of people running the city. I talked to voters over two years into changing to an automatic government, and then I sat there for eight years and watched my friends and neighbors take over from the good old boys. The citizens get very, almost giddily happy with their new government. And then I moved back to Tucson, and wouldn't you know, we got a city manager government. After watching the city transform itself, after I initiated, I initiated the process. It was the voters who voted it in, it was the voters who voted the new government in. And so here I am. I have done 102, 375 City Council meetings, 100 and some Board of Supervisors meetings, 187 additions of a new city government for Tucson, at excess Tucson, and then another 44 of Thomas Jefferson still lives. And all I have accomplished for all of that effort is we have a slightly, we have a significantly better, yes, I did initiate the police reform process, and it's the only accomplishment I have done. We have no city government, we have no automatic government. The county needs a sales tax, countywide sales tax. I think I've talked the details to you. I will be haunting this room until I have accomplished more of my goals, so we're all just going to have to live with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanted to speak? I'll go ahead and close the call to the public and ask my colleagues if they wish to respond to a criticism, ask staff to review a matter, or ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. Okay. Next item is executive session, that's actually on addendum number one. It's pursuant to ARS 38431.03A3 and 4 for legal advice and discussion, consideration of any matter within the scope of 38431.03A1 regarding the employment contract for County Administrator Jan Lesher as required by 38431.03D, and any legal action must be taken in public session. I'll go ahead and move that we go into executive session for this item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Here again, this is bringing back that cloud that's overhanging the whole subject of the County Administrator's contract, how it's going to be formulated, what it's going to say. And it's going to be conducted in executive session behind closed doors, which I think is clearly against any form of transparency or government responsibility to the taxpayers. There's a number of questions that I have, I'm hoping I can get some clarity on these questions. I doubt it, because I think the way this whole incident has been structured is highly suspect that there's something going on that is not going to be presented to the public. For instance, why isn't this on the agenda? It was, it seems like it's being hid from the public. Apparently, we're approving a contract that was not publicly posted. Does that violate open meeting laws? There's a certain element of duress to approve this County Administrator's contract on the day the current contract expires. It's important, I've said this before in similar situations in past years, that public business should be done in the public. And the highest paid employee by Pima County and the taxpayers needs to be discussed, analyzed...
Here again, this is bringing back that cloud that's overhanging the whole subject of the county administrator's contract, how it's going to be formulated, what it's going to say. And it's going to be conducted in executive session behind closed doors, which I think is clearly against any, any form of transparency or government responsibility to the taxpayers. There's a number of questions that I have. I'm hoping I can get some clarity on, on these questions. I doubt it, because I think the way this whole incident has been structured is highly suspect that there's something going on that, that is not going to be presented to the public. For instance, why isn't this on the agenda? It was, it seems like it's being hid from the public. Apparently, we're approving a contract that was not publicly posted. Does that violate open meeting laws? There's a certain element of duress to approve this county administrator's contract on the day the current contract expires. It's important, I've said this before in similar situations in past years, that public business should be done in the public. And the highest paid employee by Pima County and the taxpayers needs to be discussed, analyzed, and formulated in the public venue. And therefore, if you're going to do what I expect you to do, which is to adjourn into executive session, I will not be participating. And I'm hoping that there will be some effort to create an atmosphere where this entire matter is brought before the public before it is finalized. Because what we have at stake here is what has been dogging us since the last county administrator retired or left or whatever. And that is a lot of questions answered, a lot of whys that are not answered. And this whole subject is, has really been, I think, something of a, of a bad situation that just doesn't seem to want to go away. So I will not be participating in any executive session dealing with this matter. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Well, just to assure the community, there are a handful of reasons why we go into executive session. And one of them is the employment contract of our county administrator. We're, we're the ones that formulate that. And so I think that it's unfortunate that you're not going to be at the table when we're having this conversation. But please be assured that whatever is decided upon is voted out in public. And that document will be available for everyone in the community once we've negotiated that. That's what happens in executive session. So, all right. Thank you. Any other comments?
Chair Grijalva.
Supervisor Scott.
There was some discussion, as Mr. Brown knows, that I wanted to engage with him about on the dais before we went into executive session regarding why I did not attach a draft contract to the item, but instead asked that the current contract be attached. So, Mr. Brown, if you could address the legal requirements in terms of what actually needs to be attached to the item, because I don't want there to be any supposition by the public or the media that there was an open meeting law violation.
Thank you, Chair Grijalva. Supervisor Scott. So in executive session, the negotiation of the contract occurs. So there's not a final contract until those conversations occur in executive session. Because of open meeting law, the board members cannot discuss or negotiate as a group before we get into executive session. So, you know, while there may be some language floating around and different, board members may have different ideas, those all coalesce in exec at this discussion. And so there really is nothing to present to the public until there is a final version that's after the negotiations.
I appreciate that, because I know that both your office and, and some of our offices got questions as to why we did not attach a draft to the item. So I appreciate you clarifying what the requirements are and when the contract is actually hammered out.
All right. All right. Thank you. So have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. We're going to adjourn into exec, and we'll be right out as soon as we're done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your patience. We're back in session. We were discussing executive session on the addendum, item number one. And that was just discussion. And now we'll move to item number three on the addendum. Board of Supervisors County Administrator Employment Contract. I would like to move County Administrators Employment Contract, effective January 8th, 2025 through January 7th, 2027. Annual compensation amount $330,000 with the option to renew for up to two additional periods of up to one year each. I'll go ahead and make that as a motion.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I recall Supervisor Hines at some point during previous discussions on this matter that there was supposed to be some sort of a performance review conducted. Has that been done?
A performance review?
Performance review of the county administrator.
No.
I don't believe it has.
No.
Just to point out that this is a significant raise here. Inserting here, we have a couple of issues that occurred under the current county administrator's watch that should be taken into consideration. I don't know if they were in executive session. But the CBIZ compensation and classification study was delivered late and over budget and has created a lot of heartache and misconceptions by the employees based on this. Pima One, also known as Workday, has been pretty much a disaster. Paychecks had to be reissued because there was a mistake in that. And it seems inconsistent that if this were in a private sector situation, this would not forego a raise with these issues. So I don't think that there was enough deliberation onto the performance of the county administrator. I don't think there was enough transparency in the hold of liberation. And I think that the least we can do as supervisors is to provide transparency and do the business of the public in business and discuss these items before instituting a new raise that is very substantial, especially given the consideration what the average income is to a family of four in Pima County. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Chair Grohl.
Supervisor Scott.
I'm extraordinarily comfortable moving forward with this new contract based on everything that I have seen in terms of the county administrator's performance, not only since she assumed this office, but also her previous performance as a chief deputy county administrator. I think when you consider her expertise and qualifications in the private sector, the public sector, at all different levels of government, we would have to create her in a laboratory to find somebody comparable to be doing the job that she's doing. I meet with her weekly, talk with her even more times than that. And I think all of us, in terms of what we hear from the public about the performance of all of the employees who are under her supervision and administration, can attest to the quality of her leadership. I think anytime there have been issues, some of which connected with matters that Supervisor Christie just raised, she has been forthcoming with us in terms of how they are going to be addressed. But I also want to point out that the board took a look at comparable salaries of people in comparable positions around the region, around the state, and feel that this increase brings her to a level where she wasn't under her original contract. And I just think not only is this change fair based on performance and qualifications, but I also think it sets the stage for where we're going to be if and when Ms. Leshaw, where the board decides that we need to move to a new county administrator. And the reality is there's just a small number of people who do work like this. And we have looked at what they're paid around the region, around the state. So I think we're not only doing right by our most significant employee, I think we're also doing right by the county in moving forward with this contract.
Thank you. Chair Grohl, Supervisor Allen.
Well, you know, based on my three days of working here, I just want to say that I am comfortable with the contract and particularly the salary and understanding, right, that the salary is not just plucked out of thin air, that it is grounded in the recently completed compensation study done by the county and fits within those parameters, given the incredible track record and experience that is brought by the administrator to the county. And, you know, and again, in this whopping three days, continuing to understand the complexity of the work of the county. So based on that experience and the incredible responsibility and role that the administrator brings, I am very comfortable with this salary, with this contract.
Yeah. I also think it's important to note that I don't know anybody in all of the county who works harder than Administrator Leshaw. She is the first one there in the morning. She is here on the weekends. She is the last one out of the office consistently. She's incredibly knowledgeable on so many issues when it comes to city government, local municipalities, state of Arizona, federal. I think that we are incredibly fortunate in Pima County to have someone with her expertise. And I think it's, you know, it just makes sense for us to look at like cities, even here at the city of Tucson, to ensure that she is being compensated fairly in parity with other people who are doing a similar job. But I think she does a better job in so many cases. And we don't always agree on everything. But she's very clear about, let me explain what the situation is. Let me tell you what's going on. The two examples that Supervisor Christie brought up. I mean, you all haven't had a class and comp study before we did for decades. And so it's as much as you estimate what, how long that's going to take, it sometimes takes longer. And when we implemented it, we were all very clear, and she was very clear, on how that was going to roll out. The same with changing over to Workday. Those systems always take longer than we anticipate. And there are always bumps, always, because a lot of it is user error. Some of it is just changing implementation. And the fact that Administrator Leshaw is pushing the county to make the changes that I think are necessary for us to be more competitive is important. And so, and we can look at some other examples of where her leadership has been incredibly beneficial. And that is the reduced number of vacancies that we have in Pima County, the fact that we want to attract people to our community, and she meets with everybody. So I'm comfortable moving forward with what I moved. Do we have any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
For the sake of transparency and forgiving information to the taxpayers who are funding this raise, could you go into the details of the contract as far as vacation, sick pay, pensions, retirement, and what they all represent dollar-wise?
Yeah, all of that will be, the contract-
Could we do it now?
I'm not, I'm not going to do that now. All of that-
Because?
Because we have to calculate her increase if we vote on it. So then you have to calculate the payout based on that. And so I want to make sure if we're going to put any information out that it is accurate. And so I want to make sure if we're going to put any information out that it is accurate. Anyway, so we have a motion and a second, and I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Allen. Yes. Supervisor Christie.
No.
Supervisor Heinz.
I abstain.
Supervisor Scott.
Yes.
Chair Geraldo.
Yes. Supervisor Heinz, did you want to explain your vote?
Appropriate comparison to other regions would put her salary at $350,000. I think we could do a little bit better. And so I really don't support this, but I don't want to vote no, because of course I support hiring Jan Lesher. So I'm abstaining.
Thank you. So the item passes three, three yes, one no, and one abstention. Thank you. Thank you. And would you accept the job, Administrator Lesher? We never asked, sorry about that. Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you for all of your work. So now we'll go back to the regular agenda. I do have someone here for item 19, if we can move to that really quickly. Item 19 is Desert Dove Apartments Affordable Housing Gap Funding. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion? Supervisor Christie?
Yeah, I have some questions on number 19. This is, this is a, why, I'm looking for an explanation of the retroactive issue here. We've been operating without an IGA since 2022 on this particular item, and I'm wondering why all of a sudden we decide that it requires an IGA. Secondly, why are there two contracts? One is a loan repayment process, and the other one is a revenue source. There's one for lending and one for revenue. Why two contracts?
Administrator-
I've also noticed that the ownership is out of town, and how is this group selected to provide affordable housing in Pima County? If you look in the background at the group that, that's behind this, they're all from Nebraska. One from, we have one from Avondale, Avondale, Arizona, Phoenix, Arizona, Omaha, Omaha, Omaha. It seems kind of difficult to understand how out-of-town folks would be able to provide affordable housing based of what we need in Pima County. So I just guess I need some kind of clarity on the retroactive issue, the two contracts issue, as well as why there are no local folks that are able to provide this, and we have to go out of town.
Administrator Lesher.
Thank you. Vice Chair Geraldo and Supervisor Christie, I'm going to turn to Deputy County Administrator DeBonis in just a moment, but there are two contracts because one deals with the expenditures to the organization to actually, you know, provide the funding for the housing, the other deals with a loan because this is a, it is a unique group. These are the individuals who responded-
I'm sorry, unique group? What do you mean by that?
We have been dealing with some of the nonprofits, and there has not been a need for loan repayments and such. So Mr. DeBonis will go into the specifics of that. But if you also notice in some of our more recent agendas, you see a bifurcation of revenue and expenditures on the same contract item, so we're beginning to walk into that. And then we go out to an RFP and to provide the best low, housing for low-income housing. And I don't believe that one of the specific requirements is the, from where the individuals are, have their business, but whether or not they can provide the best service to the folks in Pima County. Mr. DeBonis.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, as the county administrator indicated, the retroactive item is related to number 18 on the agenda. So just to clarify that the Dove, Desert Dove Apartment item is not retroactive. The explanation that the county administrator gave is correct on why there are two contracts. This is a 30-year loan, so there is one expense contract where the loan is being issued, and then there's repayment of that loan with interest over the 30-year period. So that's why there's an expense contract and a revenue contract, and that's how things are set up in Workday. You'll be seeing that routinely where we have agreements that have both expenses and revenues. They'll be shown differently. And then lastly, Ms. Lesher is correct that there are no criteria currently that indicate that out-of-state entities are ineligible to participate in the gap funding process. So this results in 64 rental units that are accessible to families with income from 40% to 60% of area median income. So the goal here is to increase the number of affordable units in the community, and there's not a criteria that looks at where the entity providing them is based.
So Madam Chair. Mr. DeBonis, having two contracts is standard industry practice?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Christie, under the Workday system, it is standard practice.
Workday system, that's one that we just implemented here in Pima County Administration?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, that's the Enterprise Resource Planning System that we just implemented, correct. And the functionality in that system segregates the expense component from the revenue component into two separate items.
And Madam Chair, is this, excuse me, in any related, in any way related to Section 8 housing?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Christie, this item is not Section 8 related to the best of my ability. We can confirm that and get additional information back.
And Madam Chair, how does this, this, this element of affordable versus low income, where does that all play out in this?
There's an explanation. Let me see. What page is it? It's Exhibit A, Page 1, that talks about the income of 40% to 60% area median income with, and that's, that's what is broken down that way. That's the explanation, because some, some of the other housing units are 80% or more or less. So it just, this is median.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
We do have an individual here in Desert Dove. Did you want to answer any of the questions that were brought up? Do you feel like you need to address them, or? You're welcome to come up.
Hi, my name is Christopher Ortega. I'm with GHK Properties, also Desert Dove LP. Thank you, Chair, and congratulations on 2025. Just to answer a few questions strictly with the Section 8. So when you say affordable housing, it's very, it's a general term. When you are dealing with workforce housing, which you've hear, heard about teachers, police officers, all that stuff, do you find that in about the 80 to 120 AMI, average median income of that section? Section 8, you find that right around 25 to 20% and below. That's your Section 8. So we are catering to 60 to 40 AMI. One bedrooms will start at, I think, a little bit under $700, and then three bedrooms will probably end about just under $1,400, I think closer to $1,300 on that one.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question of the speaker? Would this be in any way accurate to describe it as some sort of backdoor rent control?
I'm not sure about your question, sir. What's, or-
Is there an element of controlling rent in this with the pricing and the-
Yes, so we're bound by ADOH, sorry, Chair. We're bound by ADOH and federal HUD laws to keep rent. We said 60 and 40 AMI, so we're going to stick to that. We're bound by 15 years of ADOH, we actually signed on to 25 to 30 years. I think it's closer to 30 because our loan is 30. So our rent's going to stay pretty significantly low for low income. So this will stay under ADOH requirements.
Madam Chair, affordable housing kind of sounds like a marketing term. Is that how it's being presented?
It's a general term, but we went through the process of getting tax credits from ADOH to highly restrict from HUD to strictly do low-income affordable housing. The tax-
Low-income affordable housing.
Yes. So it's, affordable housing has been used, I don't know, 60s, 50s. Now you have it kind of broken down, like I said, you have the 120 AMI, 80 to 80s of workforce in the middle, and then you have Section 8, where you have it 20% or less. That's your, your traditional Section 8.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. I do want to make note that I was present for the groundbreaking-
Yes.
And there's overwhelming community support for this project from, it's right in Midvale, and the need is really significant. And so I think that you're filling a need, and I'm comfortable moving forward with this. And I want to thank you for being here and coming up and answering questions, because I know it's sometimes frustrating when you're sitting in the audience, you're like, I have the answer, and, you know, so I just wanted to give you the opportunity, so thank you.
Absolutely. And this is a conversation that us, that we need to, to continue. Once we hear the terms affordable housing and tax credits, everything kind of goes out. But I think the more understanding, the more projects that are done, and of course, appreciate the help from, from the county to be a part of this project, so we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, thank you. Mr. DeBonis, you are correct, I was referring to number 18 on that other issue, and I apologize. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. So we have a motion and a second, I believe. All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. And just for the audience, Supervisor Heinz is putting his thumb up or down if he's voting yes or no, so that's how I'm documenting that. Okay. We'll go to the Board of Supervisors, sitting at other boards. Item number 10, Flood Contol District. It's a contract, I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Item passes unanimously. Sitting as the Board of Supervisors, approval of the consent calendar. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Item passes unanimously. Item number 12 is the appointment of board members to boards and committees and commissions. This is something that prior to the board changing, the chair would just assign these committees, and I think it's important for us to have a discussion and willingness from board members to, to serve on these committees, but also transparency for our community to know what other boards we're serving on. And so in this case, I'd like to, Arizona Border Counties Coalition, I'd like to ask Supervisor Allen if she would be willing to serve as the representative on that commission or coalition.
I would love to.
Okay, will you second?
Second.
Okay. Have a motion, a second for Supervisor Allen to serve on the Arizona Border Counties Coalition. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Item passes unanimously. Thank you. County Supervisors Association Legislative Committee, this is a committee that Supervisor Scott has represented us on, and I would like to ask if he'd be willing to continue to represent us on that one.
Absolutely.
Okay, will you second?
Yes.
Have a motion, second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Item passes unanimously. Pima County Association of Governments usually also goes with Regional Transportation Authority on this one. I would like to serve as the representative for PAG and for RTA.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Supervisor Scott. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie, then Supervisor Scott.
I think at this particular time, we have a kind of a pivotal moment in the history of RTA, and Supervisor Scott is, I think, the one that has been most active on that board in dealing with all the issues that are facing RTA 2 next. And I think it's important that he continue that connection to the past and that it would be serving the public and serving the RTA Board and the PAG Board for Supervisor Scott to continue on in that capacity. So I respectfully request that we vote to retain Supervisor Scott in that position.
Are you making that in the form of a motion?
I am.
A substitute motion? Okay, we have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion dies for lack of a second. That'd be nice though, if we could do that, right? Okay, Supervisor Scott.
Chair Geraldo, I appreciate Supervisor Christie's comments, and I have enjoyed and appreciated the opportunity to represent the county on both the PAG Regional Council and the RTA Board for the last four years. But anytime I go into a PAG Regional Council meeting or an RTA Board meeting, I am representing the position of the county. And I sit down with Ms. Lesher, Mr. DeBonis, Ms. Skinner, other department heads, if there are other Pima County departments that are affected by a PAG Regional Council agenda item. And so whenever I go into those meetings, I not only feel very prepared because of the opportunity to sit down with our professional staff, but also I feel that I'm putting forward the position of the county. And I think anybody who takes on this position, whether it's me or Supervisor Geraldo or any of us, is going to have that same level of preparation. I also think that it's important that we rotate that responsibility. Under previous boards, we had one supervisor who was in that role for 15 years, and that might have been the preference of those previous boards, and I'm not questioning their decisions, but I don't necessarily feel that that is the position that we should be taking. We're all on an equal plane as supervisors, we're not mayors. I can understand why mayors stay in those positions for their jurisdictions for a sustained period of time, but I think a position of supervisor is different. And I can assure you and all of my colleagues that I'm confident Supervisor Geraldo will engage in the same planning conversations with our staff before going into any, any PAG or RTA meeting.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And thank you for your comments, Supervisor Christie. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Item number, the next one is Sun Corridor. With the merger, I'm wondering if we don't appoint for this item, perhaps leave Supervisor Scott on the committee until we figure out what's happening with that?
I saw-
Or, or, I mean, or we just don't have an appointment at all? Because I just don't know, I think we just have to figure out, we provided funding for Sun Corridor, which is why we were on that committee, is my impression. And with the merger, I'm not sure if, I mean, this board will have to make a decision whether we're going to continue that investment under, with Metro Chamber, Sun Corridor, whatever the name will be under that merger.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Here again, the continuation of a historical representation, I think, is very important as this merger takes place. And I think Supervisor Scott has been in that position. He knows the groundwork, he knows what the intentions of both entities are, and that as a result of the monies that the government, that Pima County contributes to Sun Corridor, I think would be in the best interests, not only of the Board of Supervisors, but of Pima County, to have Supervisor Scott in that position, continue in that position so he can monitor the merger and report back to the Board of Supervisors his observations. This is a monumental merger. I think there's a lot of moving parts to it, and I would hate to see that the Pima County Board of Supervisors is not represented on that. And I think if anybody knows from the county standpoint of what this merger is all about, it would be Supervisor Scott. So I heartily recommend that he retain that position and be reelected to it or reappointed.
Yeah. Supervisor Scott, did you want to?
I, I appreciate Supervisor Christie's comments, and there is still discussion that is ongoing about the composition of the 23-member board that will come out of this merger. I sat in as our representative to the Sun Corridor Board when they voted unanimously to merge with the Tucson Metro Chamber. The Tucson Metro Chamber Board had voted in favor of the merger prior to Sun Corridor doing so. I made the point at that meeting that I think it is absolutely vital that the county be part of that 23-member board, especially given, as Supervisor Christie said, and I raised this point at the meeting as well, our significant financial contribution to Sun Corridor. I also made the point that I thought there should be other public sector membership on the 23-member board. So what I would request is that once we have a better sense of the composition of that 23-member board, that I am our representative.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Supervisor Scott raised some very important points- Supervisor Scott raises some very important points, but nonetheless, it is acknowledged that this is a transformational element between the two boards, and by having Supervisor Scott continue in that capacity, he can help monitor and shape the future of this new board. If he's not there, there's no input or opinions being given from a county standpoint, and we would be leaving a void there, and I, again, to reiterate, I heartily recommend that Supervisor Scott retain the position and monitor the transformation and take part in shaping its future.
Okay, any other comments? All right, so do you want to go ahead and make that as a motion?
I would like to move that Supervisor Scott retain the position on the Sun Corridor Board as it is currently and retains the position representing Pima County in the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, and if there's any changes where they eliminate Pima County as a board or something like that, that you'll come back to us and let us know.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, great, okay, I'll go ahead and second that. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Item passes unanimously, that's Supervisor Christie moved and I seconded. All right, and then we have Visit Tucson, I am currently representing on that board, and I know Supervisor Hines expressed an interest in serving the Visit Tucson Board, are you still interested in doing that Supervisor Hines?
I think in light of, no, actually, I'm not.
Okay, so I'm happy to continue to serve if.
So moved.
Okay, so I'll second, any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Item passes unanimously. Metro Education Commission, this is a commission that Supervisor Lee represented the board on, do we have anybody interested in serving?
Chair Guralva.
Supervisor Scott.
Given the fact that I served on the Metropolitan Education Commission Board when I was a school administrator, and I'm familiar with all of the reforms in its structure that have been already made, and some that may be coming down the pike, I would be happy to represent the board as our representative to the MEC.
Great, I'll go ahead and move that.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Christie, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Item passes unanimously. Now the Board of Health, I've been representing the, our representative on the Board of Health for some time, do I have any interests from any other of my colleagues to serve? Okay, I'll go ahead and.
Chair Guralva.
Yes, Supervisor Allen.
I'd be happy to serve the board.
Great, okay, I'll move you serving, just for, you know, mix it up. Do you want to go ahead and second?
Second.
Okay, so have a motion, a second for Supervisor Allen to serve on the Board of Health as the Board of Supervisors representative, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, item passes unanimously. Great, thank you all, we do have Ms. Simon is here for item number 37, so I'm wondering if we can jump to that really quickly. Item 37 is the Acceptance of the Office of Digital Inclusion Grant, $487,733, I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
A motion, a second by Supervisor Scott, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no, thank you. Okay, we have 41, we have a request here, we have someone here for this item, since we're on the hearing side, can we go ahead and do 39, oh no, we'll just go ahead and do this one, 41, this is a hearing for the draft impact fee, land use assumptions, report and infrastructure improvements, we have an individual who would like to speak on this, this is a hearing, Brendan Lyons?
Chair Guralva, members of the board, on behalf of Southern Arizona Home Builders Association, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to comment today on the draft land use assumptions and the infrastructure improvements plan. Impact fees are an important tool in funding necessary public services to support community growth and new development. Properly calculated impact fees will balance infrastructure needs and housing affordability within the statutory framework. The Department of Transportation team has proactively worked with stakeholders to include SABA, and we appreciate their efforts. We have conducted an initial review of the drafts that we have, and we have identified areas that could be potential concerns, and look forward to in-depth discussions on the details to include levels of service, detailed project costs, proportional allocation of costs, and legacy projects. Again, we definitely look forward to working with staff, continuing on this matter. In closing, we recognize the importance of this issue and believe that a balance can be achieved to ensure that we continue investing in infrastructure needs while maintaining housing affordability. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And anyone here want to speak on this issue? Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Madam Chair, move to accept the staff recommendation, approval of the updated draft land use assumptions.
Thank you Supervisor Christie.
Second.
Have a second by Supervisor Scott.
Madam Chair.
Excuse me one moment, if we, yeah, Mr. DeBonis. Have a presentation, yes.
Madam Chair, and I normally wouldn't interrupt the proceedings of the board, so there's no action required of the board today, other than to hold the public hearing, we do have Ms. Catherine Skinner here, Department of Transportation Director, she has a brief slide presentation to orient the board. These two items will be presented back for action by the board in February, so today it's just a matter of opening the public hearing, taking testimony, which you heard from Mr. Lyons, and then closing the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie, you withdraw the motion.
I'm sorry?
You withdraw the motion.
Withdraw the motion, I would like to make a quick comment too.
Sure.
That in this whole process, as has been the case, but just to reiterate, that Pima County administration staff work very closely with the Southern Arizona Home Builders Association to work out any details or any issues or or speed bumps that might come in the way, but but primarily to make sure that SABA is intimately informed and participating in this whole process. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. DeBonis, Ms. Skinner, yes.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Mic on here. Thank you, Chair, and members of the board, I have a brief presentation, as Carmine said, to orient you on the update of our development impact fee program, so next slide. The state statute has established the ability to collect impact fees for those infrastructure needs that arise from new development. On this slide is a brief table of the most frequently used types of fees, we do have a full listing on our website, but a single-family residence is an $8,500 fee, that's really the most common one collected, and then we also collect it for commercial purposes as well as residential. The county does not collect any impact fees for wastewater, parks, or public safety. Next slide. Oh, and a little bullet came up, every five years, we must update this, so this, we were here in 2020, and we're here again in 2025 with these updates. Next slide. So this is the first two reports of three required reports, it's the land use assumption report as well as the infrastructure improvement plan. Later in the spring and summer, we'll be coming back with the fee rate calculations, but these two are heard first. Next slide. So the colors on this slide did not come up on the big screen, but on the TV screens you can see it, that we have seven different collection areas, they're geographic around town, so in north, southeast, west, so you kind of know where to orient yourself. In the last, since 2020's plan was implemented, we've collected $42 million in total, these areas are designed to have a nexus, so you can't have one area that covers the whole unincorporated county, because not everyone would necessarily use the road that we're going to improve, and so they're geographically sized, so we try to get a nexus with every project. In terms of how much we expect to earn in each area, we look at the historic growth patterns for each of them. Next slide.
Ms. Skinner, before you go to the next side, slide, just from my own knowledge, why was it decided that there be no change to current service areas, and if there had been a change proposed to current service areas, what would be some reasons that we would make any changes?
Sure, Chair Guralva, Supervisor Scott, great question. So one reason that we decided to keep the same service areas is that we adopt a 10-year plan in terms of the project list, but we come back every five years, reevaluating these assumptions, the project list, the fees, so if we were changing the size and shape of these, the accounting, and I think the way that we report it to the public would become much more difficult. I will say there were some ever-so minor tweaks, so we had selected the center line of some roadways as the dividing point between, say, south and southwest, we have moved it so it's at the edge of the right-of-way, so an entire roadway is it within one area or another, but those are ever-so minor changes.
Thank you.
So two of the things we look at in the land use assumption report is how growth will be achieved in each area. This table is showing the historic housing permits since 2020, and then what we're going to look at for the next 10 years. As you can see by the percentage of permits in each area, it is not uniform across the county where this growth is happening, I'm sure it's not a surprise to most of you, southeast has the most growth, west comes in second, north has a fair amount of growth, and then the rest is fairly stable with low growth. We looked at projecting about 1,200 new permits per year, this is consistent with what the track record has been the last 10 years. Next slide. We will also look in the land use assumption report at job growth, so as I mentioned, there is commercial fees assessed as well as housing, this is, again, looking at where the growth is, we look at a lot of data in terms of the Arizona Office of Economic Opportunity, which looked at a 0.7% increase, the PAG Long Range Plan looks at 0.6%, and Eller College has assumed a 0.9%, so for the purposes of our report, we went conservatively with a 0.6% growth rate for the jobs. Next slide. The last program had 28 projects in it, and of those, eight have been completed, and six are currently in design or construction, so as I mentioned, it's 10 years of projects that are put into that report, we just completed the first five years, and half of our projects are in some point of development or completion, so that's a big success, here's some photos of them, of course, the Valencia Road widening is a rendering, is not complete, but we are well along with design. Next slide. And I think some more bullets will come up on this, but this is, you know, we'd be remiss if we didn't mention that the cost of construction has grown dramatically in the last five years, and really, you know, that that growth started even before that, since our plan was adopted in 2020, the construction costs have increased by 80% for roadway projects, and so in developing this, we really have to look at a balance between fee increases and what the project list looks like, of course, right now, we're just talking the project list, but we're looking at the full picture at once. Next slide. Now, I don't expect you to read these, these full project lists are, of course, with the board item, but this is the project list by area that is in the proposed plan, go to the next slide as well, it's comprised of a combination of roadway widening projects, intersection projects, and projects that will add turn lanes, these projects have to be capacity-driven, so these are not standalone safety projects, they're not standalone drainage projects, they are really dealing with the need for extra capacity due to this development growth. Next slide. And just to look at the timeline, we started this process last July, these reports were publicly posted in November, this is the first visit here to the board, with the public hearing that you just held, we will be back on February 18th, at which point we would be asking for approval of the plans. Next slide will show the next steps, so kind of you do the same thing with the fee study, April, those will be posted publicly, with a public hearing planned in May here at the board, and in June, asking for adoption, at which point the new fees would go into place in September if if everything moves through the process. Thank you, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you, I do have a question, I know that we're allowed to collect fees for wastewater, public safety, parks and recreation, you mentioned that, and water facilities, and have we explored what that will look like if we were to start? I just think it's a it's a good discussion for us to have as a board, I also think that considering sort of the the shared costs that the state has historically taken on that is coming back to Pima County before, what was this last budget year was over 121 million or something? I'm just concerned that, you know, these are, these infrastructure costs are costs that we do incur, and I'm wondering if we should explore some of some of the potential we have to to collect impact fees for some of these services.
Madam Chair, we can come back to you with a memo outlining what authorities the county has, it's slightly different than municipalities, so not all of those things mentioned, do we have statutory authority on? With wastewater, we do assess wastewater connection fees, and then there's obviously the sewer user fees, so that wastewater connection fee, which is authorized by statute and is also adopted in county ordinance, serves as an impact fee of sorts, and so we're happy to come back and give you a full expression of what authorities we have and the consideration of each of those items.
Okay, great, thank you. Supervisor Christie.
And just to be clear, I'm looking at the item, it says staff recommends approval, you're going to be coming back for the approval, but you're going to not need it today, is that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions?
Chair Guralva.
Supervisor Scott.
Ms. Skinner, the project list included First Avenue widening between Orange Grove and Ina, I know that there's also a deferred RTA project that affects First Avenue between River and Ina, is this project that is on our list separate from that or in conjunction with that?
Thanks, Madam Chair, Supervisor Scott, you'll find that there's a few projects on here that match projects either in RTA or the proposed RTA next, so that would be the same project, there's also Houghton Road, which is a city-led project, but portions of it are in the unincorporated county, that is still in here as well, so we matched the scope between what the proposed RTA next plan is and what is in this.
Got it.
IIP.
Thanks for that clarification.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want to go through the hearings since we're on this page? Item number 39 is a liquor license, and D3. Do you want to, do we have anyone here to speak on this item? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Item passes unanimously. Item number 40 is a hearing agent change, acquisition of control restructure, this is for the Barbecue Rush Restaurant in D2. Supervisor Christie.
We received a statement from the sheriff regarding this confidentially, but my question, I guess, is to Mr. Brown, what can be discussed of the sheriff's report regarding this license?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, let me take a second to look at it again.
Was it confidential? I read it, I just didn't.
The chair, it does not appear that anything here is confidential, it's publicly available information.
Okay.
Madam Chair, based on the sheriff's report, there's some troubling matters, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm wondering if there is someone in the administration who is a little bit more familiar with the situation on this, apparently there were some felony issues that were mitigated to misdemeanors or something of this nature, it appears that the charge was later waived to a misdemeanor. If, are liquor licenses approved with this type of past records, and if so, what's the purpose of going through a liquor license evaluation? And if so, what's the purpose of going through a liquor license evaluation? And I would just like to hear, I don't know which which entity in the administration would be monitoring this, but if there was some sort of rationale as to why with with several aliases of the applicant, a felony charge that was reduced to misdemeanor? I'm just curious about the whole process and what the what the ramifications are to approve this or not approve this.
Administrator Lesher?
Chair Grishalva and Supervisor Christie, these don't come through county administration for us to opine or review in any way. I can, we can spend a little more time getting back to you with what the exact process is, but I'm not familiar as it is. It goes through the clerk and then reviewed by the by others, but Ms. Menriquez, if you have.
Yeah, Chair Grishalva, Supervisor Christie, so they did come through our office. Your approval is local jurisdiction approval, and then it goes up to the state. The state then has the final approval.
And the location, Madam Chair, of this proposed venue is next to a KOI campground, I believe. So the final arbiter would be at the state level? So by approving this, it will automatically go to the state level, and they would have the final say?
Chair Grishalva, Supervisor Christie, whether you approve it or deny it, that recommendation goes to the state.
And Madam Chair, Ms. Ms. Clerk of the Board, could you kind of intimate what influence our approval would have on the final dispensation of the of the final board up in Phoenix?
Supervisor, Chair Grishalva, Supervisor Christie, I'm not sure. That would be a question for the state to answer. I do not know what influence, what the influence has on their final approval of the item.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Allen?
So I'm I'm curious why it is that if somebody has a misdemeanor, right, which was the ultimate charge, why is that brought to our attention for for an agent change acquisition of control of a restaurant? Right? Just because, I mean, it's a misdemeanor, and I'm just curious why this is relevant?
So it was on our agenda last time with a note. So we asked for, like, give us more information about what that means, because we normally, you don't see it at all.
Yeah.
And I think it just, I think it was because it was a felony reduced to a misdemeanor, they wanted to clarify. Yeah, they wanted to flag it for us just to let us know. But we've never seen it before, so we were like, what is that about? So that's why the sheriff created a report. Yeah. Any other questions? Okay. So we've closed the public hearing, and, oh, we haven't done anything. Is anyone here to speak on this issue? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and what is the pleasure of the board on this item?
Is there any way to request, Madam Chair, that the applicant come before this board so he can ask questions directly to you?
Um, I mean, I-
Chair Grishalva, Supervisor Christie, the applicant is sent a notice of hearing so that they do have the opportunity to come to the board meeting.
So they, so this would have been an opportunity.
They've already been notified. Thank you.
Supervisor Heinz, this is in D2. Did you want to make a motion or?
I mean, if this is before the board staff has reviewed it, then everything is in proper form and, right? I mean, it doesn't usually come before unless everything is appropriate and, like, all the distances between, you know, from the establishment to, like, nearby schools are all appropriate. That's, is that my understanding?
Yes. Did you want to go ahead and make a motion?
Yeah. I guess we've closed the public hearing and then, yeah, I guess, sorry, is it 39 or 40? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry? You want to go ahead and move the item?
Yes, I just was clarifying which item we were moving.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I didn't hear that. Okay, so we have a motion. Do you have a second?
I seconded for purposes of discussion.
Okay. Supervisor Scott, seconds. Any other discussion?
Just to get some further clarification, and I don't know, Ms. Menriquez, if you've already dealt with a situation like this, but if the board takes it, whether or not the board takes action today, this is still going to go before the State Department, and which State Department is it?
Supervisor, Chair Grishalva, Supervisor Scott, it's the Arizona Liquor License and Control.
Okay. And then do we have any sense of the process that they go through in terms of the the final approval that they?
Chair Grishalva, Supervisor Scott, I do not know. This, the board's, this is a local jurisdictional recommendation that is by statute. So and even if you do not make a a motion, I would have to send a letter saying no board action. So.
All right. We have a motion and a second. I'm not getting a read on the board, so if we can take a roll call, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Supervisor Heinz.
Yeah, I mean, I just did this last year. There's a process for anybody to object at the level of the of the state liquor board. So there is another process beyond just the recommendation of the local board.
Okay.
And-
Supervisor Scott.
Just to be clear, could I see that document again, Supervisor Christie? Thank you. Just to be clear, the document that we got from the sheriff, he's responding to a question. Says, is there any reason this application should not be recommended for approval? And he said, then he lists the alias of the applicant, that he had a prior felony, and in 2018, he was sentenced in that case to probation, and appears the charge was later waived to a misdemeanor. So but it's unclear from what he wrote that he's laying out the facts that I don't know that it's necessarily clear that he's recommending disapproval. So I'm I'm comfortable moving forward and having the State Department that gets into these issues at a at a more granular level make the the final determination, especially since whatever action we take here, they're still going to have the final say.
Well, Madam Chair?
Supervisor-
Would it be appropriate to continue this item?
I mean, I think that we we did, right? So we had it on our last agenda. It's on this one. It's fairly common when people complete programs, diversion programs, probation, that part of the incentive for doing that is to, you know, you don't serve any jail time normally, but you also have sort of a clean record and opportunity to do that. So I I tend to support those kind of programs in general. I fundamentally support them, and I think that it's important that, you know, we give people the opportunity to be contributing members to society, and if this were such an egregious felony, they it wouldn't be, they wouldn't have the opportunity to be reduced to a misdemeanor. And sometimes, if you think about it, like, you know, felonies can be criminal damage over $250 versus criminal damage of $249. So sometimes, there's just like little nuances that is considered a felony. So I don't know what this is specifically. It wasn't provided, but I I feel comfortable moving this application forward to the state sort of way.
Chair Grishalva, Supervisor Christie, so just so you guys are aware, we will send a copy of the sheriff's report to the state when we send the recommendation, and they do have a deadline. They have a certain amount of days. So within those days, if we don't send a recommendation, they will move forward. So just so you guys are aware of that.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Okay. Now we'll go back to, I think we're on item number 13. Is that right? County Administrator, Medical Insurance for County Employees Fiscal Year 2526. Administrator Lesher?
Thank you, Chair Grishalva, members of the board. We do have a slide we're putting up. What you have before you are requests for approval of the premiums for our employees, employers for health insurance for next year, and approval of the county's continuation of the county's contribution to the health savings accounts. Well, that's very small. I'm sorry. But what the bottom line is that what we're looking at for employees for next year, the proposed rate would be such that if the employee participates in the in the wellness program, an employee will actually see a reduction each pay period of $12.48, and the it will be even, it will be decreased for employees and spouses and children and families if they participate. If they do not participate in one of the health programs, what the proposed rates would see an average, I believe it's about four and a half percent for employees for next year. So we are still, I think the greatest increase that we see is coming with an employee and family would go up about $56, but again, an opportunity to get almost $50 off by participating in wellness. What we do when we look at how to establish the rates is we've set the requirement that the Health Trust Board needs between four and six months of projected claims. By continuing at this amount, we believe it will put us at a projected balance of about $30.7 million. We need between 22.8 and 34.2, so we believe this adequately puts the fund where we need it to ensure that our employees are covered when they have incidents. And then one of the ways that we, thing we have done for many years is to provide additional incentives for those who are on the health savings account of $1,000 for an employee, $2,000 for employees who cover additional dependents. Our request before you today is to approve the the premiums as as displayed and to continue with the county HSA contributions as delineated.
Thank you. I I think Pima County has some amazing benefits, and I know that I've had the opportunity to look at different school districts, community college. I mean, I just think that we're very competitive, and the fact that we're allowing people, if they participate in the health, you know, the health program, to actually see a reduction is a really great incentive. So I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Supervisor Heinz? Thank you. Item passes 5-0. All right. Item number 14, quarterly report on collections. Administrator Lesher or?
Chair Grishalva, we have distributed the quarterly reports for collections and are just simply looking for an approval from the board of that report.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item passes 5-0. Item number 15, renaming of the Pima County Natural Resources Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. This is resolution number 1, or resolution number 2025-1 of the Board of Supervisors authorizing the renaming of the Pima County Natural Resources Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission to the Pima County Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. Administrator Lesher?
Madam Chair, if I may, as you, as some may recall, we have the Natural Resources Parks and Recreation Department. It was split in large part into two different departments. This is simply to rename the one commission. There has been some discussion internally that we are having with our new director, Administrator DeBonus, about the appropriate configuration of a of an additional advisory committee that would then serve conservation land and resources, and we will be returning to the board with a conversation about that at a later date.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other ca, I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item number 16, designation of a public right-of-way at the portion of River Road in District 1.
Move approval of staff recommendation.
Thank you. All second. Item was moved in by Supervisor Scott and seconded by me. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, question?
Supervisor Christie?
Yeah. This is a pretty well-traveled area. I'm just curious, why isn't it already provided as a right-of-way?
Administrator Lesher?
Thank you, Administrator DeBonus. Thank you.
Madam Chair and Supervisor Christie, so there are occasions where through our research, we identified that the roadway itself had not been dedicated. So in this instance, the county acquired multiple properties that the roadway lies on, and so we've identified that it has not been dedicated as right-of-way. Back in November, the board took action establishing the roadway segment for maintenance, but the parcel area is bigger. So the County Department of Transportation owns lands on both sides of the actual right-of-way alignment, and this is to officially dedicate the right-of-way portion to separate it from the lands on either side of it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other questions? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item number 17, the Flowing Wells Irrigation District. This is to presentation of the certified canvas for this, the Flowing Wells Irrigation District. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item number 18 is a City of Tucson Amendment for the Section 8 Housing Choice voucher. This is to extend the contract term to 2/27/29 and amend the contract language. There's a no cost. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item number 20 is a Green Valley Assistance Services. This is to provide emergency solutions grant and extend the contract term to 6/30/25 and amend the contract language, no cost. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Christie. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item number conservation, under Conservation Lands and Resources. Item number 21 is the Friends of Tucson Birthplace to provide development, operation, and maintenance of Mission Garden. This is a contract amount of $100,000. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
This predates practically, well, I guess, just about everybody on the board here, and it talks of a master plan, and I have a question about the, not only the, what does that entail? But the five-year contract with Pima County and we're to to provide $100,000, is that a one-time issue over five years, or is it one, one year, every one year, $500,000? Third, what is the City of Tucson's participation in this? And I'm curious, we just made some changes with parks and recs and things of this nature. In the background, this item is described as a park. Shouldn't this come under Parks and Recreation? And it also says that the money that is is being involved in this, it comes from the new newly formed, what is it, CLR Department, under a special revenue fund. And since this is in the city, shouldn't the city be leading on this? And what what is the purpose under this master plan, going back to 2016, that Pima County's involved in this?
Administrator Lesher?
Thank you, Chair Grishalva and Supervisor Christie. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. DeBonus, but I can tell you that the total amount of the contract is $100,000. It is not, it may be paid over years, but it is not, that's the maximum under this. And the the master plan deals with the master plan of Mission Gardens and what they've been looking in that area, but I know Mr. Debonus has been working more closely with this.
So just to clarify, Madam Chair, the the $100,000 is over five years, not every year, $100,000?
Administrator Lesher?
It may be paid in one fell swoop, and I believe that will occur, but it is not $500,000.
So Madam Chair and Supervisor Christie, before you today is a one-time contribution for $100,000. So it is a single payment item to the Friends of Tucson Birthplace. So they have acquired additional assets that are buildings and land that this $100,000 is is going towards the the maintenance and and the operation of it. So more broadly, the county has an agreement with the Friends of Tucson Birthplace, and that agreement was administered by the former Office of Sustainability and Conservation, right? That contract is now under the administration of Conservation Lands and Resources. So to your point, Supervisor Christie, it is a park, but it is a historical, historic and cultural park, right, for educational purposes. So we had made the decision, going back to the original contract, to have it be administered on the historic- on the historic and cultural side of the house, not on the parks and recreation side of the operation. So before you today is a one-time payment to them for $100,000 for the operation and maintenance associated with new assets that they have acquired.
And Madam Chair, Mr. Debonus, what's the special revenue fund?
So Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, the office, or excuse me, the Conservation Lands and Resources Department is funded through a variety of sources. This source is related to fees that they charge for operations that are generated and maintained in a special revenue fund, separate from the general fund dollars that they get for base department operations.
And Madam Chair, Mr. Debonus, what does the City of Tucson participate in this?
So Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, I do not believe that they contribute to this. It is a county-owned property operated as a county historic and cultural resources park. Pima County, that, that contract, the base contract, which had a five-year term and then two five-year renewal periods, and we're in that second five-year renewal period, is a total of $50,000 each year recurringly.
And Madam Chair, one final question, just to clarify, this is located directly in the City of Tucson?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. But also in Pima County, in D5. Hurry. Okay. So we have a motion and a second, right? I want to make sure it's been minute. Okay. A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Item number 22, it's Bruce Wayne LLC. I'm so glad this got some news. It's hilarious. I was like, wow, it's exciting that that's what it's focused on. Anyway, it's a helping grant funds, apparently, for Batman. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion.
Madam Chair.
Oh, Supervisor Scott then Supervisor Christie.
Just because this is, this item is connected with the Northwest Service Center, could we request from county administration and update on the current status of the Northwest Service Center? I'm not asking for it now, but just down.
Absolutely. It'll be coming out this week. Thanks.
Oh, okay. Well, you anticipated that. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Supervisor Scott's point, this is the Sixth Amendment for this contract. And the whole idea was we were going to experience cost savings by consolidating all of these functions in the Northwest facility. How have we been saving costs thus far? And it looks like we've spent another $1 million on rent that was initially designed to save money because of the consolidation.
Madam Chair and Supervisor Christie, as you know, this is to get us through June in that when we began to look at the development of the Northwest Service Center, there were multiple buildings, multiple leases that would be eliminated to move into the location as, over the last couple of years, I think the overall scope of the Northwest Service Center has been more consolidated into simply the health functions as part of the reports that we'd be providing. But we recognize that, for those of you who have been at this clinic on First Avenue, it was one of our reasons to want to move forward with the Northwest Service Center. This last $94,000 is to finish out the lease and to allow for the final movement of that facility, the end of the lease and the movement into Northwest Service Center.
So we will be seeing, Madam Chair, a report on our savings forthcoming?
Chair Gidi Haba and Supervisor Christie, we send you, I believe it's quarterly or by annual updates, on the Northwest Service Center, talking about all elements of the construction. I'm pausing because I'm not seeing in my mind an element related to that, but we will certainly look, go back to, I believe, when we purchased the building in 2017 or 2018, some, you know, as we approach the decade, what's actually occurred in that facility. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Item number 23 is amphitheater to provide IGA for Coronado K-8 School Utility Assistance for the, I'm assuming it's because it's a shared use space for the grounds?
Correct. Chair Gidi Haba and Supervisor Christie, it was a 25-year agreement that we entered into with the district when we used 1997 bond funds. So it is a shared use and part of that agreement extends it and to allows for the funding of the utility costs.
Okay. All right. So I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair. Oh, go ahead.
Supervisor Scott then Supervisor Christie.
So we kind of, kind of sped over that whole scenario there. We, through the 97 bonds, provided the infrastructure for the lighting of athletic fields. So that, that came into fruition. Pima County taxpayers through those bonds paid for the installation. Now, Pima County is being asked for the expense of operating the utility, i.e. the lighting. Shouldn't this be in an operating expense for the school district to pay? And how many other school districts do we support with their utility bills, particularly when this is coming out of the general fund?
Chair Gidi Haba, Supervisor Christie, we pay utilities for the portion of the athletic fields during the time in which they are being operated, if you will, as county facilities. It is a shared use facility. There are times when it is not being used by the amphitheater school district, where our Parks and Recreation Department utilize the fields as part of the complement of fields and athletic activities that we provide the public through the general funds. This is to pay for those share of the lighting costs for when we are using the field as if it were a park. Is there anything we would add? Yeah.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie and County Administrator, I'd only add that the prior agreement did have us paying a share of the utilities as well. So it is not starting anew. In addition to the investment in the amenities, we were paying over the term of the original 25-year agreement, the portion of the utilities. And this is a continuation of that payment, as Ms. Lesher indicated, for the period of usage outside of when the school district is utilizing the fields.
So Madam Chair, County Administrator Lesher and Mr. Debonus, to be clear, the public has access to these fields and not exclusively for the use of the school district.
Chair Gidi Haba, Supervisor Christie, that is correct. The public has use of those fields at the times when they are parks and recreational fields.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Scott.
Just to expand on Supervisor Christie's line of questioning, I really appreciate the fact that the county has an IGA with the amphitheater school district that is enhancing the use of athletic fields in a county that, that needs greater access to athletic fields for all of the different leagues, youth, and adult that operate within the county. I'd like to ask Ms. Lesher if the Parks and Recreation Department could look into other possibilities of intergovernmental agreements with other school districts where we could have a similar enhancement of use of athletic facilities. I don't know. I'm assuming we already have some that are in place. I know when I was the principal of Tortalita Middle School, we were allowed to use fields at Arthur Pack Regional Park for our athletic teams. But this, by having the fields lit, again, it expands the use of athletic fields. And I'd love it if we could partner with the school districts and have more opportunities like this one. I'm wondering if that's something that Mr. Pereira and his team could look into. Great.
Madam Chair, just.
Supervisor Christie.
Are there any fees associated that are being collected with this on the county level?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, there are none.
No. I think some of them are games and tournaments. And so depending on what the tournament is, sometimes they collect stuff, but I don't think in this case. But we do have shared use, like the City of Tucson has a shared use agreement with Menlo Park. I mean, so this is not uncommon, especially if we're in areas where there's a lot of students that have a lot of activities and we don't have enough fields to host all of them. Yeah, but it's, it's not, it doesn't happen often, but when it does, I think it's great to have another option.
Just to, it did not make it clear, Madam Chair, that this, this was a joint venture and a joint usage. It appeared that it was exclusive to the school district.
Yeah. No, I think, I think it was good to bring it up. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item passes unanimously. Can we take 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29 together?
Chair Gidi Haba.
Supervisor Scott.
I don't mind taking them together. I had asked the county administrator yesterday via email to clarify some questions I had about 25 and 26, but I don't mind taking them together.
Okay. So let's go ahead and take, we'll just do 24. It's fleet services for the purchase of heavy trucks. I'll go ahead and move the items. Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item passes unanimously. Can we take 25 and 26 together? Okay, we'll take 25 and 26 together. I'll go ahead and move both items.
Second.
Motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Scott.
Just had asked, Ms. Lesher, with item number 25, we're practically doubling the cumulative not to exceed contract. But if you look at the background materials, we've only expended less than half a million dollars. So I'm just wondering why we need to practically double the not-to-exceed amount of annual approach the current.
Administrator Lesher.
Thank you. Chair Gidi Haba and Supervisor Scott, and I apologize if we were not making this clear. The unexpendited amount or the numbers we're looking for were in AMS. That contract is going away. We are transferring all of those dollars in the new contract to Workday. That's what you're seeing before you today.
Okay. All right. So another, another Workday transition.
It's going.
And then item number 26, you had a question on that one as well?
The question I had about that is that we are tripling the annual award amount, and the reason is that there's a greater quantity of services being required than, I apologize.
We're tripling the, the annual award amount from 250 to 750. And the reason is there's a greater quantity of services being required than anticipated. And I just wanted to know a little bit more about why there has been such an increase in the amount of services required than what we had planned.
Thank you. Chair Gidi Haba, Supervisor Scott, first of all, this is another instance where we had multiple contracts. This is consolidating all of the funding for our, for Ahmed, our occupational care, into one contract. It's a co-op with other governmental entities. So you're seeing a plus-up because of the consolidation. The, checking yesterday, the most significant increase we've seen actually is in TB testing. And not only the cost for that, but we have had to expand the number of individuals that heretofore had been required to go through TB testing. An example of that is we used to have corrections officers having to be, to go through a TB testing. We did not have the folks who work in the kitchens out there, the cooks. Those individuals have moved over onto required the TB testing. So we've had a plus-up in some of the expenditures in our occupational health care. The most significant has been the increase in TB testing. But the biggest reason for that number coming together is the consolidation of contracts.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Gidi.
Okay, thanks. So we have a motion and a second for 25 and 26. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item number 27. Can we do 27, 28, 29, 30?
I have a question on 30.
Okay. So 27, 28, 29, I'll go ahead and move all of those three. I have a second. The only thing I wanted to make a comment about is 27. If we can, I brought it up before, but if we can look at providing banking services with a local bank, I mean, we've talked about it. I brought it up pretty much every year. Be nice to go local, but, okay. Anyway, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Items passed unanimously. Item number 30 is to provide landscape maintenance agreement for a portion of the Troya Boulevard. It's a no-cost 25-year term. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Christie, you got a question?
Yes. This kind of odd, it's just, it's in the City of Tucson, this, this area where these movable plant, movable steel planters to protect our sewer line. I, we, how many sewer lines do we need movable protection of planters to protect our sewer lines? Well, and how can this be at no cost? And just give us the Reader's Digest version.
Mr. Debonus, thank you.
Putting movable steel planters to protect sewer line.
Madam Chair and Supervisor Christie, it wasn't until you said that out loud that I realized the, maybe the, the lack of clarity in that item. So in place of planting trees in proximity to the sewer line, the movable steel planters, right, will create a protective barrier for the plantings, right? So we have standards for vegetation that can be planted near or in the areas of our sewer lines. And so this is an agreement to allow for landscape vegetation to be placed without posing a hazard to the sewer line that lies below it. So the trees are being placed in the movable steel planters. It's not being done with the intent to protect the sewer line. It's actually being done so it doesn't cause damage to the sewer line.
I see. And Madam Chair, what, who is Prince Tan QOB LLC?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, this is a project that is west of the freeway, and it's roughly between Prince and Miracle Mile. So it's a large industrial park there, and the county owns certain rights of way. It's right along the Santa Cruz River. The Chuck Holcuberry Loop is at the western edge of it. There is a sewer alignment and sewer easements. There's a sewer pump station and odor control facility there. So county, the county owns assets on the periphery of this private development and is granting the owner of the development approval to do landscape beautification in the steel planters in proximity to our.
At their cost.
At their cost.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay. We have motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Item passes unanimously. Sorry, I lost track. Okay. Now we're on, can we take 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 34? So you want to speak on 34? No. We can include 34. You want to speak on 35? Okay. All right. So I'll go ahead and move. Can we just say them in order? 31, 32? Okay. We're moving items 31, 32, 33, and 34.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Items passed unanimously. I just want to make note about how great it is to have more money for weatherization. Item number 35 is environmental quality. It's an EPA agency inflation reduction monitoring project. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Item number 36, we already addressed 37, 38. Okay, I'll do 36 and 38. I'll move both of those items.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Opposed.
For both of them?
All of them.
For 36 and 38. So items pass 4-1, 36 and 38 with Supervisor Christie voting no, because we already addressed 37.